I'd like to call to order the February 3rd, 2020, meeting of the Common Council of the City of Algoma. I'd have the clerk take the role, please.
Mary?
Yep.
Here.
Here.
Everden.
Here.
Havick.
Here.
Schmidt.
Here.
And Dashlin Cleveland.
Thank you. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let the minutes reflect that this meeting is held in compliance with the open meeting law. Approval or changes to the order of the agenda as published. Hearing now will accept the motion to approve.
So moved.
Moved by Mitch.
Second.
Second by John. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carried. You have two sets of meetings. There was a special meeting and a regular meeting on January 6th. Did everybody have a chance to review those? Any questions? If not, entertain a motion to approve. Moved by Kevin.
Second.
Second by Jackie. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carried. Public comment. Do we have anybody this evening for public comment? I don't think so. We have all managers here and a new face in the back row, so. Okay, very good. Then we're gonna move on to consideration of bills, claims, and conference attendance. Does everybody have a chance to review the bills? Any questions on any of the bills? Hearing now will accept the motion to approve.
So moved.
Moved by John.
Second.
Second by Mitch. Roll call vote, please.
Smith.
Yes.
Havick.
Yes.
Everden.
Yes.
Wees.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Mary.
Yes.
Thank you. Conference attendance. We have a request for Chief Remicker to attend the community policing boot camp at the Aurora Regional Center, February 4th. That's tomorrow. And that's in Escanaba, you said?
Aurora was canceled, just on the south border.
So you have a little drive ahead of you tonight, Jim.
There's nothing there.
A hotel and a campus.
Can I have a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Moved by Jackie. Second by Jake. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carried. We're gonna go right into our committee reports, moving right along. I'll give the report on the Finance and Personnel Committee meeting, which was called to order by yours truly on January 15th. Role was taken. There was a motion made in second to approve the minutes of the December 18th meeting. We went over the bills, and those were--a motion was made in second to approve those. There was nobody here to speak under public comment. Under new business, ordinance 823-2020, amending section 13.06 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Algoma, relating to the cross connections, was introduced. The first reading will be held this evening. Treasurer Amber Shallow gave an overview on where we are with the Crescent Beach Stormwater Outfall Project. We're currently waiting on a new design plan and hoping to have the project out to bid by the end of January with the completion. I think in the fall of 2020 would be probably something a little bit better than the summer of 2020. There was a motion made in second to go into closed session at 8:48 a.m. We reconvened to open session at 9:43 a.m. There was a motion made in second to have Robert E. Lee and Associates put together a citywide needs assessment, not to exceed $15,000. Roll call vote that was carried. There was a motion made in second to adjourn at 9:45 a.m. Next meeting will be February 19th at 8:30 a.m. Any questions? Then we're gonna move right on to protection of persons and property. Scott?
The PPP meeting was called to order January 27th at 4 o'clock here at City Hall. All members were present. Also present were EMS Director Kelly Cos, Fire Chief Tom Ackerman, and Police Chief Randy Remicker. The agenda and the prior meeting minutes were approved. There was nobody here for public comment. Under department reports, Director Cos presented the minutes for EMS. There was 34 calls since the last meeting. 23 calls so far in 2020. 415 calls total were responded to in the year 2019. Shelley Brown has completed her ride-alongs and has begun her probationary period as an AEMT. And firefighter Eric Junior began his EMS driver training. Chief Ackerman provided the minutes for fighter department. There was two calls since the last report. Captain Todd Hultoft-Dride has provided an August 1st, 2020 date as a retirement from the department. Department is actively looking for replacements. On behalf of the group, I'd just like to thank Todd for his service early. Winter training has begun with focus on tours for local businesses and manufacturing facilities. Some of the department members will begin the RIT training, which is Rapid Intervention Training. Refresher course that will start beginning in February. The department is also doing some research for a possible drone purchase. Chief Remicker provided the minutes for the police department. Calls for service for the date of--for the month of December were 116. Total 2019 calls for service were 1,698. Positive note, Chief Remicker noted that Group A crimes are down 53% in 2019 in comparison to the 2018 year. There was no new update on the SRO, and there's some policing initiatives for 2020 that were discussed. We did approve the training that we just approved tonight here for the boot camp that he's attending tomorrow. The bills were approved. Under old business, all of the old business items for the SRO, kayaks and swimming, and first net were tabled. There's no new information. Under new business, there was a brief discussion in regards to golf carts. That was also tabled until more research could be done. Under license applications, all of the license applications were approved. They were in relation to John Du Oil. All of those went through. We went through agenda items for next month, and the next meeting will be held Monday, February 24th at 4 o'clock here at City Hall.
Questions or comments? Mitch?
I thought we had approved something in the last few years as far as carts on the streets. I thought we had approved that already.
We couldn't find anything. And now, not saying that there wasn't anything done and it got stuck away someplace, but we kinda researched, and we have a request from an individual to take a look at that again, and he did send me some information from the ordinance and stuff that they have down in Florida.
Because we do have an individual that uses one fairly regularly.
Right, right.
And he--there is a--correct me if I'm wrong, Randy, isn't there a state plate now available that--
Well, the one I did talk about, my understanding that was approved by through the gates all the way up. You're allowed to use that. That was prior to getting here, so--
You're right, it would've been.
Absolutely. So I think what the decision was to get some more information, because they wanted to take a look at the health question with the UTV ordinance and UTVs and see. If you're gonna do one, you shouldn't look at all three at the same time. You're trying to make--if you're gonna pass one law, it's a pass for other. So I know they're in a mix of gathering information at this time.
My other thing was, was Jan Doo, were they just on a different timeframe?
No.
Or they just forgot about it?
Jamie can explain that.
They have licenses for their both the stations. He switched his business from a sole proprietorship to a corporation.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thanks, Scott. Let's move on to Marina. John?
Marina Committee met this past Tuesday and at 5 o'clock here at City Hall. We had myself, Ryan Klessig, and Tom Levy were present. Matt Murphy was also present for Public Works. All of the--the agenda was approved. The meeting minutes were tabled, because we didn't have enough people who were at the meeting to approve them, so that will be carried over to next month. There was no public comment, no correspondence. Approval of the bills. Roll call vote was three, four, and zero against, and the motion carried. Public--management report, Public Works, was deferred to old and new business. Under old business, we had a discussion of ADOC, and Matt Murphy reported that upon inspection of the old ADOC utility centers, they were--we were going to use for the rebuild project to recycle those. None would pass state code today. Replacement of these units will increase the cost of the ADOC project. Matt will get the information as to how much it will increase the project. Motion by Klessig, second by Levy, to update our Marina DUCs to meet state code. Motion carried. As far as 2020 availability, Matt stated that the--there would be a minimum of eight slips be available for early season voting. The 2020 Marina Management with three of six Marina workers scheduled not to return for the 2020 season. The committee is extending manager search. Ads will also be put in the media for the best qualified candidates. We tabled the diesel fuel discussion availability at the Marina until fall of this year. Under new business, discussion on Port-au-Prince bill. The bill was delivered to the committee, was significantly more than originally approved by the committee. This bill was disapproved for payment. Motion by Levy, second by Klessig, to offer reconsideration of this bill following negotiation by Matt Murphy. Motion was carried. Volunteer dock construction. Matt Murphy reported that most of the materials have been received and Public Works staff were developing prototypes and manufacturing jigs and spacers to streamline the work for the volunteers. Once that's completed, Matt will inform me when the shop is ready to start, dates and times to follow. On the railing maintenance replacement, it's still pending, still waiting for funding to become available. There will not be a new meeting time for this committee, and a letter to slip customers to advise them of new dock A construction and preparations for the 2020 as a result. Items for the next meeting are 2020 Marina Management, ADOC construction progress, progress of manager search. And the next meeting will be February 18th at 5:00 p.m. Note that this one will be at the Public Works Building on Sunset, and mainly because this building's gonna be used for elections. So, we adjourned at 6:40 p.m. Any questions or comments? Matt, did
you have anything to add?
I don't have that this night.
Okay. Thanks, John. Let's move on to Parks and Rec. Kevin?
Park and Rec Committee met on January 28th at 7 o'clock. All members were present. Also Nick Schrader from the Boy Scouts. We approved the agenda, December minutes, and also the bills. Under public comment, Boy Scout Nick Schrader talked to the committee on his plans to do an Eagle Skull project at Peterson's Park. He will be building two picnic tables and be making a picnic area in the Pine Tree area on Church Street and an area of the Frisbee Golf Course that overlooks the park. Both areas will be cleaned out and wood chips will be placed under the tables. The area in the Frisbee Golf area will also have some brush--bushes planted. The Parks Committee will discuss making a donation to Nick's project at a later time. Old business, we had eight youth club rentals, one Knutson Hall. We discussed Olson Park launch fees and determined that we would put up a donation box for use of the kayak, launch pad, and boat ramp. Under Director's Report, the programming update, Saturday morning program will be the first four weeks of February. Robertson will be working together to put up photography class for adults, start to think about the summer park program. Committee building update, salt sliders remodeling the shower rooms to make more storage. We'd like to thank Justin Gogger for making pizza oven rack for the concession area. Thank you to Nicolay Bank Foundation for the donation of $1,500. We made a motion in second by Kirkman to approve the purchase of furniture for the stage area with this donation. Under Parks Update, weather has not been real good for the ice rink. We received an estimate for the Perry Field Stadium lighting project, a $44,528.24. Motion by Gressel, second by Wees, to recommend to the council to approve the lighting project. Reviewed the capital budget, purchasing a new truck to replace our old blue one. Under Crescent Beach Update, construction bids are still planned to go out for the spring. Robertson and the city staff met with Rob Wright of the Smith Group to discuss the concerns with the high water and the parking areas. He will attend the Finance and Personnel meeting in February to discuss the project. On the new business, we discussed the need to reevaluate the concession area and aging friar hood. Robertson will research the possibility of an air friar. Next meeting is February 19th at 7:00 p.m. at the youth club. We adjourned at 7:53.
Questions or comments? Sarah, anything to add?
We're gonna try to make a go of the ice rink this week. We're gonna work on it a little bit to make a valiant effort. Looks like we're gonna have a little stretch of cold weather, so stay tuned.
Yeah, Sunday's weather didn't help it at all.
In regards to the project being rebid, is there gonna be any additional cost? I'm assuming there's gonna be additional costs to getting the rebid?
I don't know about the rebid, but I know that there might be additional costs to doing some of the engineering work. So that's something that Rob talked to Matt, myself, and Amber about, and he will be here at the Finance and Personnel meeting to talk about that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thanks, Kevin. Then let's move on to Public Works and Lee's absence. Scott, you wanna do that, please?
Sure. Public Works Committee meeting was held on January 21st here at City Hall at 5 o'clock, held in compliance with the open meeting law. All members, with the exception of Kelly Cos, were present. Also present were Matt Murphy, Jeff Huffman, and John Cross from Summit Beach. The agenda and the prior meeting minutes were approved. Under public comment, John Cross from Summit Beach just wanted to thank Matt for getting the two condo associations together for a meeting that they had in regards to runoff problem. The bills were presented and approved. Jeff Huffman from Suez gave his report in regards to the water treatment facility. A little over normal, but all was good. Then essentially, we went through the fact that for the 2019 budget, under the maintenance cap, we had about $12.83 that was left over and rolled over into 2020, and all was on track for the 2020 maintenance cap. Matt provided us with his report for the department. A lot of maintenance going along with the decking for the ADOC system down at the Marina. They were busy with snow removal throughout the city. As aforementioned, that meeting with Maritime Point in Summit Beach was--he's present for that. He attended an emergency management meeting up in Door County concerning the high water levels, which is gonna be a problem potentially for all of us. Discussion on grant and other items to possibly aid into the destruction of lake shore properties was discussed. Under old business, there was none. New business, the 2020 street projects, number one priority for early spring is gonna be to work on the section on Navarino Street between Second and First Street. Bids should be out early in February, so we can start the work early this spring and get done at the same time. All of the northeast asphalt can coincide with the First and Second Street final coatings for the 2019 projects. There was a brief discussion in regards to a new street sweeper. After discussion, some more information was--there was a request that Matt gets some more information and come back to the February meeting. Next meeting's February 18th at 4 o'clock here at City Shop, and we adjourned at 6:27.
Questions or comments?
Hey, you have--
Yep.
Nothing in the minutes, but I think it needs to be addressed by the committee is the new bridge on the northwest corner. When the old bridge was there, there was a nice smell rail that kinda separated it. Now that's wide open, and I think it's a safety issue. And again, the county didn't replace the bridge, they replaced what they wanted to replace. And I think that needs to be addressed with them first, and I know probably probably didn't avail, but if not, I think we need to do something. It's just, like on the Four Street Bridge, there's a wooden one that was put up. The old one had the metal rail. That's gone, but I don't think we can leave it wide open like that for too long.
Matt, will you wanna reach out to our county?
I have some stuff up to the highway apartment already, and I will be checking with Robert Lee as well to see.
Yeah, I know what he's talking about. That is wide open right there, so.
Does it need Armco or just a catcher?
Well, it needs a regular railing, I think.
I think it needs something, and you don't--it's gotta be somewhat psychologically pleasing. Like, the wooden one is fine. I mean, it doesn't have to be metal, but just something where kids don't stroll down there and fall down. There's--right along the sidewalk, it's not a real steep incline, but kid could ride his bike right off of there pretty easy.
Any other questions or comments? Matt, you wanna just highlight that meeting coming up Wednesday for Navarino, in case some people are watching?
Yes, for everybody. There is a meeting February 5th here at the council chambers at 5:30 with Robert E. Lee. It is open to the public. It is to discuss the one city block in between First Street and Second Street on the reconstruction utility and rebuild of that one city block right in front of the winery there on Navarino. So that will be this Wednesday here, 5:30 p.m.
Thank you. Okay, thanks, Scott, for--let's go on to community development. Jackie?
The Community Development Committee met on Monday, January 20th at City Hall at 6 o'clock. All members were present except for Heidi Rack and Anthony Nazi, who were excused. The agenda was approved or presented, and the meeting minutes from September 16th were also approved. No one was present to speak under public comment, and there was no old business. Under new business, the committee reviewed a grant application from Bird City Algoma requesting $125 for the yearly renewal application fee. That moved by Truckee, second by Davis, to approve the request. Roll call vote was taken, with all members present voting yes, except for John Havick, who abstained. The meeting adjourned at 6:17 p.m. The next meeting date will be announced.
Questions or comments? Thanks, Jackie. Let's move on to tourism promotion. Mitch?
Meeting was called to order by Lee Hosh at City Hall, 1:30 p.m. Agenda was accepted, and November 18th minutes were accepted. Kay Smith presented a financial report. Motion to accept was--there was a motion and it was accepted. Lee Hosh was featured on the cover of On Wisconsin Outdoor Magazine, which was a nice nod to Algoma. Registrations for sports shows in McCross and Shoppa Kanawi or something like that, Minnesota, have been submitted. Smith announced this semi-annual meeting, Harbor Towns, will be hosted by Algoma on April 24th. It will be held at Knutson Hall from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. City paid for our ad in Our Wisconsin Magazine, which will hopefully be supplemented by creating an Algoma Stay and Play package using certificates from local businesses. Marketing ideas for Ryder Cup in September and Wisconsin Notre Dame game in October were discussed. Commission will check with other groups such as Kiwanee County Tourism and Promotion to see if they're doing anything for those events. Lake Michigan Stockholders will hold a meeting in Algoma in October. Tourism Assessment Survey has been collected, with about 200 being returned. Task Force will start working on the returns. Next meeting, February 17th. Motion made in second to adjourn. Motion passed.
Questions or comments? Thanks, Mitch. Let's move on to library. Jake?
Thank you. There will be a cable meeting this month, for anybody that's interested out there. Library meeting. Members--all members were present. A couple were excused. I guess a couple were excused. Meeting met on January 20th at 4:06 p.m. We approved the agenda. There was no public input. A motion was made to approve the minutes of December 16th. Motion was made, passed, and carried. Friends of the library report. Sue Haas gave the board an update on the book corner, and it looks like they'll have romance books on sale through the month of February in honor of St. Valentine's Day. Directors Report. There are many upcoming programs planned, and some of the programs that we'd like to highlight are a stuffed animal sleepover on February 7th. That sounds like an absolute fun, fun thing to do. Kids take their stuffed animal down to the library just shortly after dinnertime. They get a bedtime story, tuck the animals into bed at the library, and then get updated reports about all of the shenanigans that the animals are doing during the evening at their sleepover. So it sounds like a good time for kids. There'll be a memory cafe on Wednesday, February 12th. This is an excellent time for you as a caregiver and someone that has memory issues, to attend, socialize with other folks that may be experiencing the same thing, and get your loved ones out and possibly enjoying reading books, newspapers, magazines, and having a social outing at the library. There's a Frozen--the movie Frozen as an interactive movie will be held on Friday, February 28th. The new Luxembourg Library Station is now available at Stodala's IGA in Luxembourg. Residents can request to have library items sent to either Nicolay Bank or Stodala's, and the Kiwanee County Library Services Board voted to add another station, hopes that it will give those residents more access to Kiwanee County Library Services. Kathy briefly discussed the national trend of public libraries going fine-free. This will be discussed at an upcoming meeting. Revenues and disbursements were presented and approved. Library bills, the motion to approve expenditures for 2020 were made by Nicole Meverden and seconded by Sue Haas. The motion carried. There was no old business, no new business, and as a further update, I would say that the library purchased 132 books, including Moral Compass, Treason, The Yellow House by Sarah Broome, which was named one of the 10 best books of 2019. They also purchased 23 new DVDs for their library. The Joker, Judy, Downton Abbey, Ramble, Last Blood, Once Upon a Time in America are some of the features. So remember, you don't have to spend money to acquire a good movie for entertainment at home over the weekend. Some of the historic updates for February. Unfortunately, on the 1st of February in 2003--or 2003 was the Columbia Space Shuttle disaster. We should remember those people advancing our expeditions into space. 1952, on the 6th, Queen Elizabeth became Queen. 1910, the Boy Scouts of the USA were founded. Marine--the Marines captured Guata Canal in 1943 in February. And here's one for the Wayback Machine. Japan as a country was founded in 660 B.C. St. Valentine Day massacre in 1929, for those of you that are interested in gangster movies and things like The Godfather. John Glenn, the first American in space, was in 1962 in February, and pitchers and catchers begin to report on February 11th. There are 52 days left for opening day. Yeah, birthdays. George Washington, Abraham Lincoln, James Joyce, Norman Rockwell, Charles Lindbergh, Babe Ruth, Ronald Reagan, Charles Dickens, Grant Wood the Artist, Susan B. Anthony, Buffalo Bill Cody, and Henry Wadsworth Longfellow. So those, February being even a short month, really did produce some great historical figures. That's it.
Any questions or comments?
I have a question. Of all the purchases, were there any--was there any increase in the number of recorded books in the purchases?
That I can't answer. I--that's gotta be a good question. I'll have Kathy add that to the report, so that we'd know how many audiobooks they've got on file and what the new ones are.
I know those are popular for the people who are traveling.
Sure.
So, and don't forget Black History Month is February.
Oh, well, that, and that too. That too. I was also gonna say that as a leap year, parents, if you plan properly, you'll only have to celebrate a birthday once every four years.
There you go. All right, okay. Any other comments, Jake? Are we--okay. Any other questions, Jake? Thanks, Jake, for that report. Then let's move on to medical board. John?
Okay, the medical board met on January 30th, this past Thursday. All were present with the exception of Marge Rodrian. The agenda was approved. The meeting minutes for December 19th were approved. Financial report was delivered for both November and December. Both sets of books were finished up for our meeting, and what we had-- And what we had in November, I'll just go to the bottom lines here, we had a net profit of fifty-one thousand one hundred and five. In December, we had a loss of twenty-two thousand six hundred and seventy-nine. We did make the December twenty-fourth, ten thousand dollar payment to the city of Algoma. The approval of the bills was five oh, roll call vote, motion carried. Old business, parking lot, the estimate for the parking lot project was received and reviewed. Motion by Pabick, seconded by Wagner, to move forward with the resurfacing of both front and back parking lots, so that's something to look forward to. Also, under old business, was the 2020 board facility goal discussion. As a part of the revamp of the law required under the Affordable Care Act, in 2019, there was a requirement and implementation for the long-term care facility to have a quality assurance and performance improvement program, and it, essentially, the purpose and intent of the COAPI regulations is to develop, implement, and maintain an effective, comprehensive, data-driven program to focuses on the systems of care, outcomes of care, and quality of life. We've been getting monthly updates on this program to coincide with the administrators' report, and have done quite well with it. And as a result, we are going to use those as the board facility goals for 2020. On the PDPM reimbursement method comparison, I asked for a comparison of how we were doing for the first quarter, looking at the new reimbursements system and comparing it to the previous Medicare prospective payment system, we had a positive difference of about thirty-three thousand dollars. So we're fairly confident that the PDPM system will help us. We also got good news, I'll look through this and state that we also got good news from Medicaid, which is also increasing our daily rate by three dollars and one cent per resident per day, as well as a per diem reimbursement level increase from Lakeland to two hundred and twenty-seven seventy-nine. All of these payment systems impact the bottom line of the long-term care facility. All of those are positive in nature at this point. So those are, those are good things, and I hope they continue. New business, we have annual review facility assessment. We had a very comprehensive review that was provided by Gene Marsh. It was reviewed and accepted. And the annual staff pay increase, motion by Gressel, seconded by Wagner, to approve the one percent pay raise for all staff, and a pay scale adjustment for staff with five years who are not earning the minimum for that level of experience through annual pay raises. Roll call vote was five yes, zero no, motion was carried. Also, motion by Gressel, seconded by Wagner, to have Director Marsh evaluate other departments for additional compensation due to additional workload and achieving cost savings for the facilities. We've had some departments step up to the point where we will not have to contract for some of the services that we have been contracting for. That's a savings to us. We'd like to reflect that in the compensation for the people in that department. So Director Marsh was given the go-ahead to take a look at that closely. Understanding business, the friends of the long-term care facility, we received their report from their meeting on the twenty-first of January. No board action was required, but of note, and I want you, everybody, to take out their calendars now, take a look at it, and there will be a shredded chicken sandwich lunchtime fundraiser on February twelfth. You can preorder, if you're working in a shop that wants to get sandwiches for everybody in the shop, preorders can be arranged with Marge Rodrian. It's gonna be sandwich, chips, and cookie for five dollars. Under the administrators' report, we had a 2019 average occupancy of eighty-two point four six percent, one percent higher than it was in 2018. We're hoping for even better in 2020. I've already discussed the Medicaid and Lakeland changes. We have a day shift RN who's given notice, going to go work for a doctor for a Monday through Friday situation, normal, normal hours. Can't, you can't expect somebody to stay forever if they're, if they've got a better deal. Also, wanted to let you know that our registered dietitian did a complete analysis of our supplement use and suggested a change in that we offer residents supplements instead of any time between meals with their meds, so that there's a positive movement forward on that. The regular board meeting was, is set for February twenty-seventh at four thirty, and we adjourned at six PM.
Questions or comments? Thanks, John. Move on to utility, and I'll do that in the absence of Lee Dashlet. The Algoma Utility Meeting was called order on January fifteenth by President Guy Hosh at five thirty PM. All committee members were present. There was a motion made to adopt the agenda. There's also a motion made and seconded to approve the previous meeting minutes. Comments, if anyone present? Commissioner Bob Valice wanted to issue a thank you to Christopher Massart for going to his home after normal business hours to explain the water curb stop repair issue. Thank you, Christopher, for going above and beyond to deliver excellent customer service. New business, there was none. Under old business, the 2019 water project updates, the water project on First and Second Street have been completed. Verizon has reinstalled the antennas on the south water tower, and they will be back in spring to remove their temporary tower. The new LED lights, streetlights have arrived, four were installed and are operating. The two on the bridge will be installed, was that coming Thursday, so that's been done, and the remaining three will be installed in spring. The city opted to own the new LED lights, and the required revisions to Wisconsin Public Service Commission tariff language and rate schedules were obtained. The PSC-approved rate for the new LED lights is similar to the current utility-owned high-pressure sodium rates. There was also, we reviewed the attached managers' report, planning commission update, there was none. There was a motion made and seconded to approve the payment of the bills. There was also a motion made and seconded to, and we reviewed the other managers' report, office managers' report, motion made second to adjourn, meeting adjourned at six oh three PM. Next meeting will be Wednesday, February nineteenth, at five thirty PM. Questions or comments? Pete, you have anything to add? Okay, thank you. All right, that's it for our committee reports. I'll accept the motion to approve the receipt of those. Moved by Kevin?
Second.
Seconded by Mitch. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried. Okay, let's move on to old business. Old business, again, this is the second reading. This is for ordinance number eight-two-two dash twenty twenty, amending zoning ordinance seven eighty-three, parcel number thirty-one two oh one, Y and S fifteen, and this is the business that's on Navarino Street. I think everybody's familiar with it. We had to basically pass an ordinance there, rezoning that, so if anybody doesn't have any questions, I'll accept the motion to approve. So move. Moved by Scott?
Second.
Seconded by Jackie. Are there any other questions or comments? If not, roll call vote.
Yes.
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 Meverden?
Yes.
Pabick?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Thank you. Under new business, under the Protection of Property Persons Report, you heard that there was a new combination Class A, B, and Class A liquor license for Jan Doo Oil, also the cigarette and tobacco product license for Jan Doo Oil, and the amusement license, and that was all because they went from a sole proprietor to a corporation? So we needed to change that. Moved by Mitch?
Second.
Seconded by John. Any questions or comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried. Okay, this is the first reading of ordinance eight-two-three dash twenty, amending section thirteen point oh six of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Algoma relating to cross connections. We will act on this in our March meeting. Then I need a motion to authorize Robert E. Lee and Associates to perform a citywide needs assessment not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars. So move. Moved by John?
Second.
Seconded by Mitch. Any questions or comments? Let's do a roll on that one.
Pabick?
Yes.
Meverden?
Yes.
Wees?
Yes.
Gressel?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Thank you. Under mayor's appointments, I have none. Under comments, like John mentioned before, there is an election coming up on February eighteenth, and there's only one in, one thing on the ballot, and that's the primary for the justice of Supreme Court position. And then I just wanted to make a comment under LED lighting incentives. Because our Public Works Director took it upon himself to look at our whole situation with our lighting and contacted an individual, I came in and did an assessment of all our lightings, and we changed everything to LED. We received a incentive from WPPI in the amount of three thousand two hundred and twenty-five dollars, and we received four thousand four hundred and forty-four dollars and four cents from Focus on Energy. So when you look at the rebates that we got, and you look at how much savings we're gonna have over a two-year period, is it, Matt, three-year period?
I think the longest buyback is at eighteen months.
Yeah. I mean, we'll be money ahead, and it'll, it'll be, you know, something where, again, thinking outside the box, we're saving ourselves some money, and that relates right back to the taxpayers, so. I have nothing else. Does anybody have any agenda items for next month? If you do, if you think of something, just contact Jamie. Before I adjourn the meeting, if you could focus the camera over where Jamie is, we have our new city administrator with us tonight. Jared Heine has started, effective today. He'll be going around with some of the managers and introducing himself to different department heads and try to become part of the community. I know next, next Monday, he'll be at the chamber meeting, so I just wanna welcome you, Jared. We're looking forward to having you work with us, and that's all I get to say, and I'll accept the motion to adjourn. So move by Mitch?
Second.
Seconded by Scott. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Posed, this meeting's adjourned. Thank you very much. How's that, Jake?